Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Sharon Penny, the Town Planner. Things are a little unusual tonight, but they're always unusual in one way or another when we have these public meetings. I am going to be starting the meeting off to prompt the board. This is a new board, to a certain extent, as you know, because of the town meeting that we had last month. We've just received word yesterday that Mr. Richard Piper, who was our Vice Chair, has resigned that position. And as you know, Mr. Conklin and Mr. Lewis, who were on this board, have resigned to become selectmen. So, we're a little lean, but we're going to be fine. We just have to create a little protocol, not create, we have to implement a little protocol here, so that we can get going. So, I, first of all, am going to ask everyone if they've been sworn in by the Town Clerk.
Yes.
Yes, that's right.
Yep, so we have an official board. Well, the first order of business for our official board, we have one, two, three, four regular members, and we have a new alternate, Ms. Patrice Scott. We're happy to have her here. The first order of business is to elect officers, and after that, to someone move to promote, if you will, or appoint Ms. Scott to a full-member position tonight, so we can give the applicant the best bang for the buck here in terms of reviewing the application. So, I guess I'm looking for a motion. We have three offices up, or, excuse me, two, I'm thinking planning board. We have two. We have a position for a chairman and a vice-chairman, so if I could ask for a slate of nominations, I hope I get at least one for chairman. Someone could make a motion, and then we'll just see it through the parliamentary procedure.
Can I ask a question first?
Sure.
Are we going to vote for permanent chair, or?
This is going to be, I would suggest tonight, just from the conversation we had before, that this is an interim position.
Okay.
Maybe for thirty to sixty days, if that suits you.
I'll nominate Neil MacGyver for sixty days.
As interim chairman?
Inter-chair, right.
Would you like to make a motion?
Second.
That's your motion?
Are you taking notes?
Well, we're, minutes will be transcribed, and I'll make some notes, and remember what we were doing. So, I guess we need to call a vote. All in favor of Mr. MacGyver being interim chairperson for the ZBA for sixty days, raise your hand. Are you abstaining, or are you voting?
Yeah, I'm abstaining. I'm abstaining.
Right, well, it's a majority vote, so you win that. All right. Mr. Chairman, if you now like to call a motion for a slate of nominations for vice-chairman, I suppose it can be interim, if you folks like, if you feel we're a little disorganized right now, whatever, but I'll leave that to you.
Okay, the chair is open for a motion to nominate a vice-chairman.
I nominate Robin.
I second that, for, is that for sixty days?
Yeah.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did you abstain? I don't think I have a choice.
I'm only going to vote if there's a tie.
Okay, all right, all right. Okay.
Now, we need to appoint Patricia.
We have a vacancy on the board, and we have an alternate, Patrice Scott. Do we have to go through a nomination process?
No, 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 you just have to appoint her.
I'm going to appoint her to a full member of the board.
For tonight's proceedings.
For tonight. But we don't, so. We don't have any other members.
No, we don't, but we will deal with that later. Flesh things out a little bit. We're scanning the audience. Better run now while you've got the chance.
Your wish always comes, so.
We don't need to do a roll call.
Actually, we do for minutes, so if you just want to name who's here and who isn't here.
Rob.
Robin Peters.
Howard Burnham.
Freeman Palmer.
Patrice Scott.
And Neil MacGyver.
Okay, all right, we've done election of officers.
Has everybody reviewed the minutes of the December 7th meeting? We've had a nice winter vacation.
We've forgotten everything we learned, I think.
I make a motion that accepts the minutes as written.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I would abstain, since I wasn't here at the last meeting.
The minutes are adopted for the December 7th meeting.
Okay, if I could just interject for a moment. We have a potential change in order of the agenda. I have a gentleman here, well, we have two potential changes for order to the agenda. Under unfinished business, as this board well knows, its approval for the Plymouth Woods project was challenged in court and subsequently reaffirmed by the New Hampshire Superior Court. Unfortunately, because that ensued, it delayed the year that the applicant had by nature of the approvals from Planning Board and ZBA to go ahead and start working on the project and to achieve the substantial and active development that our zoning and the state statutes call for. So, I ran it by our town attorney, Mr., or Attorney Radigan, and what we need to do, or you need to do essentially as a board, the principals of Plymouth Woods have approached us, and this is all proper and rightly theirs to do. They would like to ask for an extension on their original approval to the ZBA, and they'll subsequently be doing it for the Planning Board, because in essence, they've been short-changed on the year that every approved applicant gets for their approval. So, not to delay things, I know Mr. McCormick, or Attorney McCormick and his group have three interrelated applications they'd like to get to, but if it pleases the board, I'm suggesting that we might amend the order of the agenda to speak to Mr. Brown and the Plymouth Woods associates. I wouldn't think that that whole deal would take more than five minutes. I've got all the particulars. It will require a motion to formally extend their approval time to such and such a date, and that's it, and I write them a letter. So, if the board would like to consider this amendment, fine, make a motion on it. If not, then Mr. Brown and his party will just have to wait till we get to item number five. So, that's just out there for.
I make a motion that we proceed on Plymouth Woods property.
Second.
Okay.
Any discussion?
I have just a letter I would pass out to the board right now, which gives you the particulars. And Mr. Brown is here to speak to it, and I'll just give you a really brief synopsis of what's gone down in terms of the actual number of days.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Just, is this the first extension?
Yes, absolutely. And this is just due to litigation. Let me ask you to just pass this down while I just speak to this thing here. As fate would have it, their original approval for their ZBA, excuse me, their original expiration date for their ZBA approval is tomorrow. So, I don't know how fortuitous that is, but considering the fact that we haven't had a lot of meetings lately, I think it's pretty fortuitous. So, I spoke to Mr. Radigan, and in essence, I'll just find my papers here, because I've got way too many of them, as usual. Okay. I spoke to Attorney Radigan, and he got back to me on February 7th and issued a memo with his advice to wit. It says, "I think the PB, Planning Board and ZBA should extend the original twelve-month period for whatever period of time that the ZBA decision was under appeal, beginning at the time that the applicant," that would be Plymouth Woods, "applied for a rehearing to the ZBA and subsequently got a decision." That was April 6, 2010, and the time period ending thirty days after the final appeal date that the abutters had to appeal the Superior Court decision, which was December 30th, 2010, plus an additional thirty days. I did the math, I checked it twice, that's 299 days. Two hundred ninety-nine days from tomorrow, April 6, 2011, which is when the original one-year substantiated development time period ends. That extension will go from tomorrow, April 6, to January 29, 2012. So, that's what I'm putting before the board at this point, a motion to extend this essentially initial approval period for substantial development from tomorrow, Wednesday, April 6, 2011, two hundred ninety-nine days into the future, which would end on January 29, 2012. And Attorney Radigan also said, "And given the state of the economy, if this particular applicant needs a further extension beyond January 29, 2012, one can be granted for good cause shown." So, I think the issue we're looking at right now is a motion which encompasses tomorrow, April 6, 2011, through January 29, 2012, for an extension.
We have a motion in front of us.
Well, I can't make it, but that's.
No, we already have a motion.
Oh, to do it, yeah, so that's your, that's your time, right?
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Both? Unanimous.
Great, that's wonderful, wonderful. I will issue you a letter, and it'll be in the minutes, and you can go home and watch it on TV again.
Surest meeting you guys have ever had.
Well, I think they've earned it.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your indulgence. We can get back to the agenda. Thank you. Yep.
That's the next letter.
Yep, cool, thanks. Great, keep going. We did the minutes, so we're ready to open the public hearing.
We're ready to open the public hearing.
Right, you just want to see.
On the first, well, we have three applications.
Well, they're from the same applicant, they're interrelated, and I think Mr. McCormick, or Attorney McCormick, might perhaps want to speak to it.
Do you represent all three?
It's actually, if I may speak, I'm Jack McCormick, attorney for the applicant, and I'm sorry to bombard you with paper, but congratulations, Mr. MacGyver, you reached an extension to power and election. Congratulations. Let me put a face on this, if I might. There are three different applications for the same thing. The, there are different architectural proposals for the same site. By way of background, again, I'm here for SNHS, the applicant. I've got David, I've got Phil, I've got Bill here, on behalf of the applicant, to speak to the actual nuts and bolts, but by way of background, there are three different alternative relief petitions or requests being filed. One is for variance, because we think that the best way to create a structure or create a sixteen-unit elderly, quote-unquote, sixty-two and older, is that old? I didn't think so, but apparently the state does, and the feds do. But the best way, we think, is by having one large structure with sixteen small dwelling units in that structure, common areas, that kind of thing. We think that's the best way to go. Again, David will speak more to that than I am. The alternative would be to have three separate multi-unit buildings, one a six-unit building, one a six, one a four. Now, we don't like that configuration as much for a variety of reasons. I mean, it's a land plan, takes up more land, more trees they cut, we think it's not as good for the occupants. We think that socially, people are better off, they've discovered they're very experienced developers, and the studies show, people are better off socially. The infrastructure is more communal. So, one request is for a variance to allow us to do that, and we think that this population does not need the parking spaces that the ordinance would require. We think that this population can be demonstrated clearly to be not that mobile. We think we can save against some land and not pave, and do a nicer job for the environment by reducing the parking spaces. So, one alternative is a variance. Now, the second alternative is a special exception. In our ordinance, we have something called a residential institution, defined term, probably not too often looked at. So, we think that there's an argument to be made for having one sixteen-unit RI in that zone. That's the second position. And the third position would be that the last remaining ability to build this would be a six unit, a six unit, and a four. Again, not the optimal, that we think, but still, it complies with the ordinance, fits on the site, and that's it. So, we have three competing proposals. Now, I look upon this as being one, one hearing with three components, and I think that I'd like to take them out of sequence to the extent that they are in sequence. So, I'd like to address the variance first, if I might. Now, that requires a motion from the board to do that, I'd like to request Mr. MacGyver motion be made to take our variance request initially as opposed to secondarily.
I'm open to a motion. I would move.
Second.
Do we need to put that in writing?
You're essentially amending the order of review of these applications, which is number three, public hearings, number one, number two, and number three. Oh, I'm sorry, that's, I was thinking that was the, in the public notice, which the abutters received, one is the residential institution, special exceptions, burned in my brain, Jack. Two is the variance.
Good job, it's over.
And three is the multi-dwelling, or multi-unit dwellings. So, I understand that Attorney McCormick would like to look at the variance first. You have three applications in front of you, one, two, three. We're looking at two first, which is the variance.
Right.
Then, one, and not three, or you'll get there when you get there.
Well, it depends, see frankly, I'd like.
You want to vote on them in the order.
Yeah, whenever, exactly.
You have fallbacks.
That's right.
Yeah.
Again, I stress again, this is alternative relief, it's not three separate requests for the same thing.
That's why I call them interrelated, yes.
Thank you, appreciate the explanation.
So, we're just, you're just looking to amend the order in which you review it, and you're looking at the one that I've noted as number two up in the upper right-hand corner.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It's another unanimous vote.
That's one down.
Do you have your conference? You do?
Thank you. I'd like to make this easy on everybody, and quick if at all possible. By way of setting the stage, again, we're seeking to construct sixteen, I hate to use the word elderly again, unit, sixteen dwelling units in the single structure in the Ag Zone. It's a sleeper property on Fairgrounds Road, right adjacent to the fairgrounds. Three point six eight acres, access on the Fairgrounds Road, a nice location for this kind of a thing. The site is interesting, because it's a flat plateau, but it's very steep on one side, it drops off pretty rapidly, and anybody who's been here, been out there, knows I'm not kidding, it's a very steep drop-off. And that, it's an interesting site for a variety of reasons. Well, the use of a sixteen-unit structure is not permitted by our zoning ordinance. We have to seek a variance for that, to my reading. You can do, by special exception, up to six units per dwelling structure, but not sixteen. So, that's why I'm seeking a variance for the sixteen-unit structure. Also, in terms of the parking, the ordinance is a little contradictory and silent in some respects, with all due respect to the draftsmen, as to parking requirements. But if you look at, you look at the structure as being a multifamily dwelling, quote-unquote, then it would be one point five spaces, in theory, for each dwelling unit. With that in mind, the ordinance allows one to seek special exceptions from that requirement based upon the special exception criteria. So, the first application touches on the reasons I think a variance is necessary, and there are two reasons, basically, and it focuses on the special exception request to dilute the parking space requirement. Now, before we go any further, I think it'd be very helpful for you all to have a good understanding of what this place is and what it does. With that in mind, I've got Bill and Phil here, I'd like to invite either or both of them to fill in the blanks and tell you, just in general terms, who they are, what they do, and how the place operates, and what it's all about, basically. Bill?
If I could just interject for a second, do you folks remember, they came to see us late last year for conceptual, I don't know if everyone was here, perhaps not, but, okay. So, we've been working on this a while with these folks, so.
My name is Bill Hart, and I'm the housing development person for Southern New Hampshire Services. Southern New Hampshire Services was established in 1964 as one of the low-income programs to help folks around the state. And about thirty years ago, we got into doing senior housing with our first development thirty years ago. And primarily, what we've used is what they call the HUD 202 program, which is a program that's funded by the federal government, and it's for folks age sixty-two and older. It's a grant program. Basically, they give us a grant to build the property, along with a rental subsidy that each person has for their apartment. So, a person lives there and only pays thirty percent of their adjusted income towards rent. So, and all the, basically, heat, light, everything is paid for as part of their rent. The property is, or the applicant also, there is an income restriction, and they have to meet fifty percent of area median income to qualify to live in the property. We've been, as I said, doing this for thirty years. We have, at this point, twenty-three of these projects around the state, from Pittsburgh up in the northern part of the state to Nashua, below over eight hundred units of senior housing. The real emphasis is the fact that folks are able to live in a building and age in place, we're able to bring in, we like to call it serviced and rich housing. Basically, what we do is we're, our, we have a service coordinator that's on staff and a management that's on staff, and it allows us to bring social services into the building to take care of the people's needs there, so that they're able to live more independently for a greater period of time. Again, having a rental subsidy that goes along with that, so that they're only paying thirty percent of their income towards rent to live there. So, anyways, HUD calls it serviced and rich housing, we call it serviced and rich housing. Again, it's one-bedroom apartments, they have a kitchen, bathroom, basically a small apartment, five hundred and fifty square feet. So, folks, again, have qualifications to get there, but our, that's basically who we are. We've, as I said, been developing these properties for thirty years. Our most recent one was down in Ashland, I don't know if people are familiar with, up kind of behind Burger King, we have a property there, and we also have one down in Bristol on Route 3A, just south of the lake. There's a pizza joint out there, an ice cream place, I can't remember the name of the ice cream place, but we're down there as well. Originally, we, back in 2009, made application for Plymouth, were given the grant for thirty-two units. As we had negotiations and actually talked to Sharon and people here in the town, we realized that thirty-two units was way too much for that site. So, what we were able to do was talk to HUD and were able to take sixteen of those units and move them to another community, and left sixteen units, which we felt was a much better fit for the site and for the community. So, we were successful in doing, getting the thirty-two units, but we also felt that sixteen would be much more appropriate for the site that we have out there. Any questions as to who we are and what we do? Yes?
All right, I'm wondering, where did the other sixteen go, and did you apply for the same site in 2009?
2009, we applied for the same site, yes, for the thirty-two units. The other sixteen units ended up being moved to North Woodstock. North Woodstock has a situation, they basically approached us, they have a situation with an expiring use property up there that somebody may be unfortunately taking out of service for seniors and converting it, so they kind of wanted some insurance for those folks up there. So, that's what we did. We also had, in the same funding allocation, a property funded in Manchester, so. All right. Everybody keeps feeding me information here, I guess I think I'm the spokesman. Jack wanted me to mention that we do have a number of different common areas in the building. I believe, Patricia, you toured our facility down in Ashland. We have a library, we have a community, community space with a small kitchen that goes with it, and then we also have laundry facilities and a library that allows, we provide computer services and trainings and that kind of thing in the library. And then there's numerous sitting areas kind of throughout the building that people can, you know, do puzzles in and have for, for those kind of, you know, social interactions. And then the other thing that we also provide is some office space for individual, you know, for clinics, a lot of times the VNA, and those folks come in and do clinics, and home health folks come in, and service links people come in. So, we have private areas, and they also have group presentations for those kinds of things as well. The other thing that we do do is make a payment in lieu of taxes to the community, based on the RSA that is available. Typically, it ends up being the non-school portion of the tax rate, or the way the RSA reads, it's either ten percent of gross revenues or the non-school portion, whichever is less. In most communities, it ends up being the non-school portion, so. Any other questions?
Can you explain to, to me at least, the difference between the housing that we just approved for Langdon Woods and this housing?
Yeah, certainly.
Plymouth Woods?
Plymouth Woods, right.
I believe theirs was a workforce house housing, so it's not age-restricted. It's funded through a different mechanism, it's funded through what they call the tax credit program, I believe, is what, I really don't know for sure, but my guess is that that is funded through the tax credit program, which, basically, tax credit- which basically tax credits are sold by tax credit banks, for lack of a better term, sold to corporations that need tax credits. And that, those tax credits are utilized as the funding to develop the property. A lot of times, there's no rental subsidies with that, but having these tax credits allows the developer to build the property at a reasonable rate so that he can keep his rents at an affordable situation. And by mandate, they have to keep them at an affordable rate. And that has a certain life expectancy. Those tax credits are in place for fifteen years, so there's all kinds of compliance they have to do for fifteen years. Our properties, the difference is, is it's a grant from HUD to build the property. We have a mortgage on the property. If that use wasn't maintained, then HUD could call the mortgage. We have a use agreement that gets filed with the deed that requires that this property have this senior use for forty years.
Forty?
For forty years, yes. So there is a use agreement that gets filed along with the deed that requires the property to be for forty years. So ours is, ours, again, is age sixty-two. It's mandated sixty-two and older. And then there's a mandated income component that folks have to meet to move into it.
So it's not going to be fifty-five, it's going to be sixty-two?
Sixty-two. And that is by statute, and that is part of that use agreement that gets filed that spells it right out that it is age sixty-two.
Now, is there any way for an applicant to get around that? Let's say if they're disabled?
No. There used to be a program, there used to be a program, the 202, and a disability program that used to house folks in the same facility. And about fifteen, eighteen years ago, HUD realized that those two populations, it's not real good to have those two populations together. So what they did is they separated it, and they have the 202 program now, and then they have what they call the 811 program, which is a different program for folks with disabilities. So they have their own separate program now that they're building.
If, if these were separate buildings, could you have those two populations living?
No. This thing would, strictly has to be age sixty-two. There's no way around it. And, you know, as we said, we have, our first property that we had built thirty years ago is that mixed-income, or mixed-population type of facility. And we've been fortunate that it's worked out, but there's been a lot of cases around the country where, and the reason HUD changed it is they found that those two populations a lot of times don't mix very well, so. Ours, we've taken the route pretty much, and not done workforce housing, done senior housing. That's our niche, and that's kind of where we go and where we try to develop, and we see the need, and so that's where we stay with our development.
Have you done a needs assessment in the area to see if we?
We have, and there are significant waiting lists at the, not only our own facilities, but the other facilities here in town, so.
To follow up on that, just wondering if your needs assessment, were you assessing the region's needs for elderly and subsidized housing?
Pretty much for, for, we were looking at Plymouth and Ashland. We know Ashland because we're already there and existing, and we have a considerable waiting list down there. And we, again, checked with the local folks here for the time on the waiting list and the size of the waiting list, and that was considerable as well, so.
Okay, so you looked at the waiting lists of our other senior housing in the town? Okay, I was wondering, how does, how do you restrict, or are there any restrictions in leases for tenants concerned about other, let's say, adult children coming to live with their?
See, it's a one-bedroom facility, so by HUD regulations, you can only have, yeah, I mean, you can have a couple, obviously. We don't allow long-term visitors by the lease, and it's also by HUD regulations. They have minimum, what they call minimum property standards and minimum housing standards, and you have to have a certain number of bedrooms for, you know.
Right, yeah, I'm just wondering what the restrictions are, because I know in certain housing complexes, there have been problems with younger adults.
We, again, we limit the length of extended stays for folks. I mean, obviously, we don't mind people having their family come for vacations, but again, it's part of the lease that, you know, they don't. And we have onsite management, we're there, our folks are, not resident managers, but we're there basically during the workday. So we know exactly what's going on at all our properties at all times, and.
I just would like to say, when I read through your application, the one concern I do have is the potential, I'm wondering if this property is really suitable for this kind of development, simply because of the slopes?
I'll let David talk to that as the architect, and I think we have a pretty good design that you'll see. Any other questions? All right, I'll let Jack resume.
Nice going. David White, the project architect, is here to talk about the physical aspects of the site, the building, our concerns, how we handle them, and things of that sort. So I'd like to introduce David White.
My name is Dave White, as you probably heard. Bill mentioned that they've done twenty-three projects to date, and I can happily say I've been involved in twenty-two of them. Was not involved in the very first one. This is Phil, he's our official easel, and so he's going to. Is there any, oh, we do have an easel, okay. Phil, you're off the hook. As, I mean, I'm going to, I'm going to repeat some of the things that you've already, you've already heard. But I think it's, I think it's important to realize exactly why we've designed the building the way that we have. Twenty-two projects ago, which was the first project we ever did for Southern, it was down in Epping, and it was a project that had two units with a common entryway for each two units. And there'd be two units, and two units, and two units. And then off on the side, there was a community building.
Like Prince Haven. Like Prince Haven, like Prince Haven up here is designed.
It could be, I don't know, I don't know the project. We used to do a lot of other, we've obviously worked with a lot of other developers on senior housing and, and, yes, we used to do a lot of other projects like that. But what we found out in working, you know, closely with Southern is that the people who were in those kinds of projects didn't socialize. They would go in their unit, they obviously knew the person next door because they shared the same little foyer. And if there was a, if there was going to be a meeting or whatnot at the, you know, the community room, they would, you know, they would go to that. Or there was also a laundry that was down in the other building. So they would occasionally meet people there. But every project that we have done since then has been what we call a central building kind of project. And that means that all of the units, all the community spaces are all in one building. So what you have is people meeting other people. And when you get over sixty-two and older, and when people move into these projects, I hate to use the word project, but in these developments, they are anywhere between the age of sixty-two to, let's say, eighty, eighty-five. And the whole theory is that they can age in place. And they will age in place better if they have more social interaction with other, with other people of their own age. So we have definitely concentrated on trying to develop projects that have a common, a single entryway, which happens to be here. The community building, the community room, which happens to be here, there's an outdoor patio space here. There's a community kitchen, that's part of the community space. When I say community kitchen, it's not, it's not a restaurant kind of kitchen. It was strictly an apartment-type kitchen where people can have potluck suppers, and they can bring things down and whatnot. There's three offices, excuse me, two offices, one for the management space, one for the social coordinator. There's also a maintenance space, which is located here, with a maintenance office for the person who will, in this particular case, he'll probably be maintaining this project as well as probably Ashland and Bristol, because they're all within a, you know, close radius. There's, there's a laundry, and there's also a library. And these spaces are spaces designed so people will come in, meet each other, whatever. So that's why we're looking for being able to build a sixteen-unit, single building as opposed to three separate buildings where the elderly would have to walk outside to get to the community space. We could do four units in one building with a community space, and the other two buildings would be six, but people would have to go outside and get into that space. This particular building here has a main entryway, has an exit stair out of this, the corridor runs all the way down to this point and down here. So there's an exit here and an exit here. Three exits. If we had three buildings, we'd have seven exits. Security purposes, this obviously is a much more secure building than three buildings on the, on the site. Now, one of the things that I know they wanted to talk, they wanted me to talk about was the land configuration. This, as has been mentioned, is basically a plateau. This area all up in here. There's a slight slope as you come from the roadway going up into the site. This is an intermittent string which flows winter, spring. And this is the top of the slope here, and this is the bottom of the slope here. This is the top of the slope over here on the other side. So this is a fairly good, fairly good drop-off. I'm able to push the building into a single building as opposed to spreading it out. If you looked at the little plan that was provided for you showing six, I mean, three buildings, the six, six, and a four, you'll see that we were way over here. We were very, very close to the top of the, top of the slope. Now, I'll also go back to that Epping project. Epping project, one of the things we did, we, we had quite a bit of land, and we decided what we were going to do, we're going to provide some hiking trails for the people who happened to live there. They didn't use them. So what happened was, after about twenty years probably, Southern sold off the back part of the project, and some more housing was developed back there, and the walking trails were gone. These people live in this building. They may go outside into the patio area, they may walk, you know, on the sidewalk, but they, but they don't go off campus, they don't go off the site. So we don't, I mean, it would be great if we had a project that was right, right here. If we get, if the town would sell us the town square, we would love to have that. But there's very little land available, and so what we look for is if we can't find something that's adjacent to, you know, the supermarket or whatnot, we find that if it's in a nice, quiet location, it works great. Now, because there is a social service coordinator, that person will coordinate their travels to get medicine, their travels to go to the doctor, their travels to go get groceries, and whatever. The other item which we talked about, or Jack mentioned, was parking. What we generally find, if we have sixteen units, when the building is opened, there won't be sixteen, but there may be fourteen cars. Within two to three years, there's probably eight cars. Because what happens is, these people, they're aging in place, and they find out that, you know, Mary Jones down the hall, she's, she's, she's pretty fit. She's got a car. I don't need my car, she loves to drive people all over the place. My father, who was eighty-five when, when he died, he loved to drive women around. He'd be a great person to live in this kind of building, because what you'll find is, I think the ratio now is 1.1 people per unit. So you might have seventeen people in this, seventeen to eighteen people. And you will find out that eighteen, maybe two of them are males, they're all, they're all, they're all women. And so from a parking standpoint, we're showing twenty spaces here. We have an area here that if we had to meet the ordinance, and we weren't granted a variance on that, we have the space to put those extra spaces. But we hate to pave the world and not, and not use it. So that's one reason why we have requested the variance for that. There will probably be, this, by the way, this slope comes over to here, and then it slopes down to the street, and then from this point here, it does slope all the way down to the, to the roof. And we have noted here, any of you who have, who have been out on the site have noticed that as you come out the driveway that's presently there, the, the view to the roadway looking east is good. Looking west, it's not so good. And we know that this is a state road, and we know we have to go to the, to DOT to get the approval for the driveway. And we have noted that by cutting back the slope in this corner, we should be able to pick up that distance, because let's face it, people who are sixty-two and older don't drive as well as people who are less than sixty-two. And so we, so we need that from a safety standpoint. So we are well aware of that, and we will definitely be working with the planning board should we get the variance on, on making sure that that works, not only for the, for the town and the people here, but also for DOT. I'm going to hand out to you, this is just some preliminary elevations that we did to show you what the building might in fact look like. And with that, I can open myself up to you, any questions that you might have?
You have already spoken about the driveway coming out onto that highway. And you spoke about the view from the west coming up. You probably haven't spoken to the speed that some of the people travel on that highway. I can. They travel.
We unfortunately hear that on every, on every project. So we don't like to look at, for instance, I, it's probably posted at thirty, would be my guess, maybe, maybe thirty-five?
Thirty-five, I believe.
Yeah. So we would like to look at the standard at a, at a higher, at a higher speed. For instance, we would look at between four hundred and five hundred feet. And if, you know, we'd also speak to the DOT about any additional signage that might be necessary.
Yeah, if I?
Which, which is only good for those people who want to read it. We all understand that.
The DOT, your previous application, which you mentioned, which wouldn't apply because it's expired and you've got more units. The DOT is insisting on dealing with that sightline distance, so it's going to require taking some of that curve out and stuff and really addressing it, be part of the cost of developments.
So what you're asking for is a variance for the one building right now?
We are asking for variance to build a single building of elderly housing of sixteen units on that site. And to put things in sort of perspective, if we were to go for the special exception to build multifamily, we would be allowed to build sixteen units of housing on that site. But it would have to be in three buildings. But it would have to be in three buildings unless we sought a variance on top of that special exception in order to do it in a, a single, in a single building. And so we meet all of the criteria that's under the quote "special exception" for multifamily. For instance, in that, in that district, they require a certain setback, we comply with all that.
This, this actually, for the six-six and four-three buildings, which would essentially be under the multifamily zoning, that's the only thing that is applicable in this case, their lot coverage would not meet the criteria. This is under the 75% maximum. So that's another consideration too, is, is impervious surface paving in whatever buildings, which just speaks to the case you're putting forth. It may be 16 units and we're presuming this is one story?
Yes.
Okay. I saw that, but I just wanted, we, we never, we never got to that point, so.
Yes, it is all, it is all a single, single-story building. The, there was one, one point that I wanted to make and I kind of forgot it.
Are they all handicap accessible?
One unit is fully handicapped, meaning, meaning the full breadth of the handicap. All of the other units meet the federal fair housing accessibility and because they're all ground, ground floor units, they all, they all have to meet that, yes.
Is there any, I know that having a mother-in-law or two in a facility like this, that they like to do gardening, is there any place that they can do that in this unit?
Yeah.
One of the things that we do do is, is provide in each of our facilities, we build raised bed gardening, gardens, as many as the folks want and we try to get them located so, obviously folks that are restricted as far as mobility are able to access them off the, our hardened sidewalk if somebody's in a wheelchair. But we do build, build them in raised beds so folks don't have to bend over and that kind of thing. So we do provide those for, for folks as, as many as they want them and obviously we got some pretty good-
Yeah, we have.
Put plenty of space there to do that, so. If you visit Ashland, you can see a couple places down there where we have them.
I guess the only other question I might have is, you know, elderly people still get out and move around. They tend to take walks. That is a drop-off. Is there anything in the plans about fencing that off?
Well, you know, we certainly could do it. Because that's not a problem. You know, it would be easy enough to put a fence along this, along this area here. I'm not sure if this is all that, all that bad. And we, you know, this obviously would make a great garden area back here, unfortunately it's on the north side of the building. But it may be far enough north so it, so it won't be, you know, shielded by the building. So I would like to direct if there was onsite activity into this area, area here. The other thing that we try to do, which Jack had, had mentioned too, is that this line of trees here is probably in roughly this area here. So we have not taken a lot of trees out of this particular plan versus what's there now. Whereas if we had three different buildings, yes, we would be taking a lot more out of, out of this area here and quite frankly, that would put, put the units and the people closer to that slope. So we tried to keep them away, away from. But certainly, you know, if you wanted to have a fence there-
So you, you have, you have buffering in place and, and the planning board would be addressing particulars, both those that, that have been brought to the table tonight, although this is a, this is a ZBA hearing addressing the zoning, but planning board could look into the minutia and some of these concerns could be brought forward to the planning board at site plan. And that's where we get into the, the details, which are important, so.
Could be a public hearing.
I have a question.
Sure.
Can you maintain your envelope-
Public input.
And install an emergency access road around the building-
After each one?
On that site?
We have looked at, and this is one of the things that we, that we will be doing, that was, we will be meeting with the fire chief and, because my thought is that there may in fact be a grass creek fire, fire lane that might go back, back here. If we had to take it around the building, yes, we could. Generally, they like to see three, three sides of the building. And so whether it's this face here or that face over there, we should be able to work it in. And by the way, this is a fully sprinkled building, it has a full fire alarm, it'll be interconnected with the, with the fire, with the fire department. Very safe structure.
I noticed that on your plan there, that where the two buildings connect, there's that little box there. What is that?
You mean this?
Yeah.
This one here?
Yeah.
That's like half the corridor.
Okay.
That was the corridor, comes, comes down here and, and goes down there. And what's nice about this particular element here is there's two windows in it.
So that'd be an exit. Would that be a possible exit?
Could be, but we really don't need it.
Need it for safety?
Well, I, I'm just thinking about the residents there, like they like to go outside, they like to put bird feeders up, you know, in, you know, if they're elderly, they, you know, I don't want them hanging out of their windows. Putting bird feeders up, is, is that something that's allowed in your-
We actually would be more than surprised to see, a lot of the folks have bird feeders right outside their windows, relatively close so they can open the window, reach out and put the bird seed in. We, we allow it as long as it doesn't create issues with bears and that kind of thing. But it happens all the time.
It just, it just seems to me like that's a good place for an exit, to access the outside.
Yeah, we wouldn't have any problem with that. Again, this is the, this is the top of the slope here and, but, I mean, it's good, there's good space out there too. You know, if they want to put a picnic area right out there, it'd be nice.
You know, and it's the north side, it's not going to be hot in the summertime, so.
I mean, we wouldn't have any problem doing it, it's just one more, one more, one more camera. One more camera.
I, I think the plan is a good plan in the fact that I have a mother-in-law that lives at Prince Haven who has to leave her apartment to get her mail, who has to leave her apartment to get her laundry, who has to leave her apartment. Her neighbor in the next building passed away and nobody knew it for four days. And so I, I do think it's nice that the buildings are connected, because indeed, they do get to know each other. And when she moved up here from Laconia, the buildings, the apartments were all in connect, connected and she made a lot of friends. She's finding it much more difficult living in a unit with a common entrance, just the two apartments. So anyway.
One of the things David didn't mention, but in the wintertime, folks use these extended corridors as their walking-
Exercise.
Exercise areas versus driving to a mall or something. They can do their exercises right in our building, they don't have to go outside on the sidewalks and that type of thing. So it's just a point of interest.
Yeah, it's five and a half foot wide corridor, so there's plenty of room for wheel, for wheelchair races.
That's what my concern is, just the, with the slopes and as people age and we have more wheelchair-bound residents in there, you know, how, how are we, are they going to be able to maneuver? I mean, they just won't be able to go out on the property.
Every, everything that you see here, you know, all of the sidewalks and whatnot, those are all accessible elements.
And you mentioned the patio, right?
Yes.
They can go to the patio.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Is, is the parking lot level with the-
There will be, there will be tip-down curbs. I mean, we want to have a curb, but there'll be tip-downs. Princess, right there. And the handicap parking spaces are right there, so there'll be another tip-down curb there.
So Teresa, you're concerned that the people are going to lose control of their wheelchair and run down the driveway?
Well, I've just, yeah, I've just, I've been at a lot of nursing homes and a lot of places where you try to take somebody in a wheelchair for a walk and it's just very difficult to get around unless-
All, all the sidewalks are all accessible and if, for instance, we put a patio up at the back or something, that would also have to be accessible despite those-
Right. But right now, everything's in the front, it's just in the parking area, there's no way to get to the back and in the back, it's kind of on the edge where this big steep-
Well, if there, if there was, let's say that there was a picnic area and let's say that they put the picnic area here and we did put a door, door here, there would have to be an accessible path into that picnic area.
And the picnic, the tables would have to be on a surface that you could use a wheelchair on.
Mm-hmm, yes.
And then the other concern I have is if we have visitors, say small children, grandchildren coming to visit their grandmother and with that kind of slopage, it's just a concern.
But you've got barriers up there, right?
Kids, kids would probably love to tumble down that slope, to be honest with you. No, I think we, no, we could definitely look at, you know, we, we could definitely look at the idea of putting a fencing up there. And it would not be chain link fence, it would be, you know, yeah, stockade fence, something that was aesthetically pleasing.
Those slopes run 25 to 35% and they're all vegetated.
Yes.
You wouldn't be taking the vegetation out.
No. No. No, there will be no pass, there will be down, down the stream down there.
Have any more that you want to-
Yeah, actually, I went to touch on to the legal criteria very briefly, but I think it's more important you have the facts than the lawyer, but anyhow, having said that, in terms of the variance request, there are certain criteria we have to look at. And I tried to summarize those for you in the actual application itself, so you have a chance hopefully to take a, take a gander before you came in and understand what we're talking about. A couple of things I want to mention to you before, you've heard most everything.
Yeah.
In terms of the cost of this, there's not cost, there's no cost savings to the developer to do this. It's not cheapening out. In fact, there's a budget to be used, whether it's three buildings or one. By doing it this way, you can make a better one building than detached, separate buildings. In other words, the pool of money is the same, the spending in here leads you to a more quality product. Having said that, in terms of the application itself, let's just talk briefly about the legal criteria. And those are of course, set forth under New Hampshire statutes. The criteria are namely, number one, that the variance will not be contrary to the public interest. And we think it's in the public interest to maintain and adhere to the goals of the zoning ordinance, which are to preserve open spaces, allow reasonable uses, all the things set forth in the preamble to our zoning ordinance. So we think our application is in the public interest to again, have something good for Plymouth, this is what it's all about. It's a perfect location for this very, very nice project, it serves a worthwhile need and we think it's a perfectly reasonable use of the property. It's in the public interest, we think, to have this here. The spirit of the ordinance is observed. Again, we think that the use, the agricultural zone is an interesting zone. You can have, I think, car washes, restaurants, you can have auto dealerships, all kinds of things. And we think that something like that here is preferable to some of the alternative uses. I mean, look at the uses by right in that zone, it's interesting. It's, it's a, it's a mishmash of uses. I think theaters, all kinds of things. We think this is a better use. It's in keeping with the spirit of the ordinance, again, protecting green space, it's, it's a place for our parents or our sisters to age in place. It's a, it's a perfect location in keeping with the spirit of our ordinance. Next criteria by statute is substantial justice is done. We think basically that it's just to have a fair use of property. There's at least one more place in Plymouth like this, I think up on Highland Street, I think it's at Plymouth Terrace or something, it's like this. And again, they got to do it, why can't we? As my son would say. But basically, we think that it's just and fair to, to allow a reasonable use of one's property. And we think that this is a perfectly appropriate, safe, reasonable use of property. It's just and fair to allow people to use their property in a reasonable manner. So we think it's in keeping with the ordinance and the spirit of variance to allow us to do this. The values of surrounding properties are not diminished. Well luckily, the, this is going to be tucked away, you won't be able to see it driving by much at all. To me, if you had a car dealership or a restaurant, those may affect the property, lights and traffic. Here, it's a quiet benign use. These people operating kids in school, it's a very, very nice tucked away, perfectly reasonable use. Literal enforcement of the ordinance would work a hardship. This is the classic criteria. Under New Hampshire variance law, the, there has to be something about the property that triggers the need to do this. It's called hardship. Something unique. Here, we think it's that, that slope. We think that slope militates in favor of pushing this over here, one structure, a lot of good occurs by having this one single structure over here. We can fence this, but we think that a literal reading of the ordinance requires we have the three buildings by exception. We think that's a bad use of the property. It's bad for the people, it spreads it out more, brings it over here more. This is a better use of the property and the, the legal grounds for variance are the hardship. And the hardship is the topography. Having said that, the last criteria is that the proposal is reasonable. And again, for all the things you've heard tonight, all the conversation, all the discussion, it's a perfectly reasonable use of property. Now, this case has one aspect that most cases don't have. If I can find this. The New Hampshire RSAs, to my great amazement and happiness, have a section dealing with things like this. What do you do when anyone here can see that's the right thing to do, it's the right, right everything for that population, how do you fit that square peg into the round hole of our ordinance? Good question. RSA 67433, Rowan V, says that, and I'll quote you if I might. Usually in a variance case, the, the real hard part of this is finding out, does the site have the hardship necessary to require a variance? That's usually where the dialogue gets dicey. We think we do. But as a backup, that RSA says, what says basically is notwithstanding anything else in the criteria, that any ZBA may grant a variance from the terms of a zoning ordinance without finding a hardship arising from a condition of the premises something to the ordinance. So you can, in some cases, there need not be hardship. What are those? It's when reasonable accommodations are necessary to allow a person or persons with a recognized physical disability to reside in or use the premises provided that a variance granted is in harmony with the purpose of the ordinance. And in granting a variance, the ZBA may provide that the variance shall survive only so long as the particular person has a continuing need to use the premises. What does that mean? What they're saying is, in a case where a person or persons has a recognized physical disability, a ZBA can grant a variance and they can limit that and say, you know what, as long as this place is 62 and older, we think that there's a need to let that aging population live there in that one structure for all the right reasons. And I had some fun in, at my client's expense, thank you gentlemen, and looking, looking to see what is disability. And the fun I had was I found a World Health Organization article on disabilities in older people. It happens to be from the UK, but they're a lot like we are in many ways, separated by a common language, I guess, as Churchill said. And I'd like to pass out this, this to all of you while you're here, if you have a moment to take a gander at this. It's an interesting little blurb on what the disability really is or isn't. And, basically, if you read the definition of disability, I've highlighted some fun paragraphs. WHO has defined disability as the following. Disability is an umbrella term covering impairments, activity limitations, and participation restrictions. And the article, by the way, is called Disability in Older People. What does that really mean? Well, some fun facts. Look, look down here. Page one. Age is associated with a 1% to 2% decline in functional ability per year and sedentary behavior accelerates the loss of performance. Well, I think we all know that and feel that sometimes. Hearing and reading difficulty is also more common over 75. Social isolation and loneliness are likely to become increasingly widespread problems among older people in Britain. Again, the UK was the source of the article. The normal aging process means more people are at risk of disability. And there are a couple of statistics here that talk about that. Page two talks about people 70 and older have two or three chronic conditions. By 75, 90% of the people have chronic diagnoses. Auditory impairments, 25 to 50% of the people 65 or greater have significant hearing loss. Half the people over 75 have hearing loss. Visual, the same thing. It's a gradual loss of hearing that occurs with aging. 92% of the people have this disorder at 75 and 95% of the people over 65 have cataracts. the people over sixty-five have cataracts. And they fall a lot. Well, the bottom line is, one can look at aging as being a disability. I suggest to you, this statute was exactly written, precisely written for this project. In other words, this population is a recognized physical disability, being sixty-two and greater, it's designed for that, and I suggest to you that, if no other reason, a variance is appropriate, in this case, for as long as this is used as sixty-two and older, by virtue of that statute. On the parking side, again, my argument on the parking, by the way, special exception is set forth in the application. We think it's appropriate, it saves, it saves the paving, preserves the trees, preserves the neighborhood, it's all right. It's all good stuff. And these people have thirty years in doing this, they know their numbers. So I think that it's a very safe bet to afford them the variance and the special exception. That's the legal pitch.
Okay. You guys, you guys given us all the testimony you want to give? One more?
Yes, I remembered what I have, I have got. We're doing sixteen one-bedroom units. Under the ordinance, under the special exception, we could be doing, or somebody else could be doing, sixteen three-bedroom units. So our impact is much less than it might be with another type of multi-campus use.
And your flow is going to be a lot less.
Our, our traffic flow is not only less, but it's also off-peak. Lowly people don't drive to work or come back from work at the same time as workforce people.
Yeah, you should deputize the variance first and then another.
Okay.
And ask for a public discussion.
Yeah.
I want to ask if there's anybody in the room who has any concerns about this application. Eleanor? What's your name?
Eleanor Plummer, from Plymouth. Having everything in one building is better than having separate buildings. Because if you have separate buildings, it's like separate towns. The people in one building do not associate with people in the other building, and so on. But I think you better look again at the parking. How many couples do you know, sixty-two years old, that are still working with, with two cars? Quite a few, quite a-
Quite a few, many.
Quite a few people, sixty-two years old, are still working, and a husband and wife, and they have separate cars. Another thing is, they, everybody in the apartments are going to have their own car. They are not going to depend on Joan next door, because Joan next door is going to go at such and such a place, and I'm not going to be bothered to take Mary where she wants to go. They, they all go on their own. I, I worked in Bristol for eight and a half years for a nursing agency, and we went to these hot places. And believe me, they all had cars, they all went on their own, nobody knew when the other one was going. They went on their own. They're individual people. They've got their own apartment, they've got their own car, they've got their own life to live. They're not sitting around waiting to see when Joe Blow wants to go someplace so they can drive him. They're going to get in the car and go. I've seen it. The cars are going and coming all the time. They go, they do shopping, most of them do, and some of them can't, I'll grant that. But everybody that can practically walk and talk has got their own car, and they're going.
So with this additional parking, should it be necessary, you have twenty spaces, correct?
We have, we have, we have twel-
You have twenty, twenty, you're looking for-
Eighteen. We have eighteen.
You have currently eighteen, but if you use the additional, you'd have twenty, correct?
The max-
Twenty-four.
We have twenty-four.
Correct.
The maximum, the maximum required for this one point five is twenty-four for sixteen years. So they're asking for a reduction of four, which is like one-sixth.
When you did the needs assessment, what was the common, the average age of person, people living in these units?
I'd say like seventy-three. And again, not to refute orate, we've, we've just found statistically that people tend to move in with vehicles, and then they tend to not need those vehicles as, as they age in place. As far as people working, again, remember, this is income, income restricted. A lot of times, folks can't work a lot because they're going to put in more of the income limitations to live there, so.
Well, I can say that, if you go up to Princehaven on any given day, at any given time, there are numerous parking spots all over the place.
Yeah, I mean, that's what we find in our, our facilities.
And I think they have a parking spot for every single apartment there, one point five, whatever it was at the time.
I've worked in different senior units, and I, that's why I asked the average age, because most of the people that I work with were older, not that many cars. A lot of them take, the senior center will take you to appointments with the van, and I think with the price of gas, they just, I know the meal program on Thursday nights, the numbers were down because some of the seniors weren't driving because of the price of gas.
We, you know, we obviously try to coordinate all that with the transportation services.
I was-
Brian Murphy.
Oh, go ahead.
I'd like to point out that the highest density of use that's allowed in California is a rooming house, and those only are here down in the village. That's up to sixteen people in there, and those people are, for the most part, parking on the street because they're all grandfathered or rebuilt units to accommodate them. So, in every, and plus, the only criteria for parking to be rooming house is one per. So it's tagged to bedrooms in that one, and I think that would be a fairly decent precedent, even though there aren't precedents in zoning, for this building, because it's one bedrooms, one per. Some may have two. Chances are, by the time the folks are ready to move into a place like this, they're going to be shedding a lot of the material stuff, just because you moved from a three-bedroom house to a one-bedroom apartment, you don't have a lot of room. The other point I would like to make is to, to go along with what Sharon said earlier, that this is probably of the two configurations that have been shown, this would be the wisest use, not only from the security aspect for the residents, but also for the imperious surface requirements. I don't know, you've all been familiar with groundwater now, and it's a big deal, it's a huge deal. And the steps that we can take to preserve it at this point in time will pay off in the future. And also, just to, as far as precedents are concerned, a lot of the physical aspects of the property that the board has raised will be addressed at site plan review by the planning board, and I'm sure Sharon will carry those recommendations forward. So rather than getting concerned about the fencing from the slope, just saying, we like to see it, just pass that on, they'll probably say, absolutely. Going back to the parking, again, you can never have enough, but it's a matter of trying to strike the balance. And as the residents give up their automobiles, suddenly, you have expanded parking for visitors and other things. One thing you might like to look at is where those six extra spaces are proposed to be, that would be not a paved area, more or less a gravelled surface for overflow parking. That way, they wouldn't have to park around the flagpole in the center. And that's also something you guys can do, you know, as far as your conditioning of this area.
I would expect that the planning board would address erosion control measures to compensate for all the hard surface and the soils.
Excuse me, are you anticipating to pave the parking, all of it? I mean, except for the overflow, the, the main bays?
Yes.
Okay. It's paved.
And we will be looking at previous pavement.
I was going to ask you that. That's great, okay.
We have two properties now, that we have the forest pavement on, the rest of the building.
Oh, good, so you've had some time to look at maintenance issues and all that kind of stuff.
Actually, it's, for people's interest, it's a fabulous product in the wintertime. Come to find out, we use, we use an alternative to salt, it's called, I can't remember the exact title, but it's not, not a salt product, but, boy, as soon as the sun comes out, the ice and snow just disappear off that, off that pavement compared to others.
The water table appreciates that.
Yeah, and just subtray their own fluid. A little more expensive to put in, obviously, but it really seems to work.
It's a smart development, that's what we try to do. We mitigate and do it the right way. We live here too.
So you're going to present that to the planning board?
There, there are some criteria, such as asbestos removal on the existing abandoned building and things like that, that will be taken up at planning board site plan level. And these folks are well aware of this, because they've looked at it for a while.
Yeah, we've, we've gone as far as tearing down the whole church site. We have to do it, we have to do it right, federal firm, you're involved.
Do we have any other citizens who would like to have input?
I have a quick question, Mr. Chairman. Is the demolition permit for that property still valid? I mean, I can go down on the computer and check it.
I don't believe so. I don't, we have a contract agreement.
All right, because Ed put in one probably over a year.
Yeah, I, I am in the process of-
You can admit that's all part of, part and parcel of the building. We've, we've got one more iteration I have.
Yeah, and just, yeah, and the-
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing now.
The board is ready to vote, you just have to, I would suggest, looks like you're taking this-
Call for motion.
Yeah, you're taking this separately, vote variance first.
Okay, I'm gonna, the chair is going to ask for a motion on the variance request that the applicant has put forward.
Can we put stipulations on this at this time?
Sure, they're fairly generic. I mean, you don't want to be the planning board, but if you're offering up, you know, say, for example, the planning board look into blah, 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 or general stuff.
Well, I would like just the residents to have, where those two cars, a j, commence in the corner there to have access to the outside. Have, and where the top of the ridge is there on the left side, that, it seems to me that they might want more open space there.
That's really a site plan concern, but, but you can phrase it, you could phrase it so that the-
I would like to see more open space on the left side of the building.
You can phrase it ten.
Yeah.
I know it's not a public session, but if it were, I'd say that you can suggest the planning board the rest of the issues. And that's, it's not far.
Just attached to your, right.
It's simply, it's simply issues that are observed by the ZBA for planning board intention.
Okay.
After the vote, I would just, yeah, we'll attach that to the notice of decision. Mr. Chair, so I would just make a recommendation that you have to go through your variance criteria, member by member, the truths and the yes or no's, truths or faults, and we'll see how that turns out. And then, depending on what we get here, if this substantiates it, this is your proofing, so to speak, then you can make your motion, and, you know, I'll go through.
Concerning the variance request, the criteria, number one, granting the variance will not diminish the value of surrounding properties. Is that true or false?
True.
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 Okay, so it's unanimous.
The variance will not be contrary to the public interest.
True.
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 True. Denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship to the applicant upon proof that the zoning restriction as applied to the applicant's property interferes with the applicant's reasonable use of the property, considering the unique setting of the property in its environment.
True.
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 False.
I was going to say true. We have a false on that one. No fair and substantial relationship exists between the general purposes of the zoning ordinance and a specific restriction on the property.
True.
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 False.
True. The variance would not injure the public or private rights of others.
True.
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 True. Granting the variance would do substantial justice.
True.
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 I have to say, false.
The use would not be contrary to the spirit and intent for the ordinance.
True.
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 True. We have, I'm not sure about the question on hardship, whether it applies in this case.
Chairman, my way of clarification, there are two ways of your hardship. You just, if you find hardship, if you want to get on that road, you can vote, you did. Or you can bypass the issue of hardship, and that statute would take over, because the statute I cited does not require a finding of hardship. So there are two ways you can go. One is find the hardship, the other is, in my reading, to avoid that question and to simply grant the variance on the basis of that statute.
Well, we've, we've taken a vote on-
So I think, I think the board has spoken on the hardship issue.
On the hardship issue.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would just, I, this is my interpretation, this is my first time here this evening, and I personally do not believe there's a hardship on the property. I think that, that property could be used in many ways, so there's not really a zoning restriction preventing that, that we're being asked to find a hardship to grant a variance. In my opinion, we don't have a hardship. Mr. McCormick has pointed out a statute that would allow a variance in cases of finding of a senior disability, but I have to disagree with that also, because based on the age of sixty-two, I just, you know, I don't consider the aging a disability. But it's just an argument, for argument's sake, I personally don't believe there's a hardship on the property.
I'm, I'm not sure what to do.
Actually, I thought, I thought-
Whether to-
Well, that was voted on hardship already. I thought there was three to two, a four to one was voted on hardship. It was found that it was a hardship. Did I not hear that?
Well, the majority is there.
Right.
So, I guess it goes, it goes forward.
All right.
I'm always, I'm always happy to be the minority vote, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I guess we-
The board's, the board's finding is that the variance will be granted. Is that correct?
Thank you. You accept it for parking, is that the next?
I just, honestly, I couldn't remember whether one person could spike it, or we needed to have three to two. I couldn't remember.
It's majority.
Yeah.
Special exception, yeah.
Yeah.
It'll see you later eventually.
We haven't had a meeting since December. And that was on the sign, okay?
So now we need to consider the special exception for the parking, correct? Miss, just as a point of order, the special exception, Ms. Attorney McCormick, that you've got for this, maybe you'd like to restate it?
Yeah, actually, it's a little confusing. I think the ordinance has at least one typo, if I may address that.
I say that because if you look at page, page, let's see here.
I say that because if you look at page, page, let's see here, page sixteen of your ordinance. Page sixteen. Is it, this is a table or a grid there? And I'm in section, it looks like section, it's my number here, it's section three oh four, and this, this is a grid on my page sixteen.
Yep.
And, um, I'm looking at the section under, it talks about uses in various zones. Parking facility for less than a hundred and twenty-five percent of the minimum number of parking spaces required by section four eleven point two. You can see by going over three spaces to the right, special exception in the ag zone. Then you look at section four eleven point two, let's turn our page again to page number forty. That is section four eleven point two. Another table, another grid, and if you look down, you'd see multifamily dwelling, one point five spaces, blah, blah, blah. Well, if you turn the page back a page, look at the bottom of section four eleven one, there's a paragraph two that talks about when you expand an existing structure, you have to increase parking by twenty-five percent. So you're left to wonder, what did the framers of the grid on page sixteen mean to say? Because in section four eleven point two, the only mention of parking is that grid. Then, if they meant to say four eleven point one, paragraph two, then that does talk about twenty-five percent more. So it's very confusing. I read that section to mean that if you want to vary the, the, the parking requirements onto four eleven two, it is a special exception. You see the problem?
One bedroom unit.
Four eleven two is all the parking required for various uses.
Five spaces.
And to vary that, or to specially accept that, according to the table on page sixteen, it's a special exception. But the calls and cuffs don't quite match.
Yeah, this, this may be a clerical error, so, in terms of the reference...
Yeah, I don't know where the reference is supposed to be.
Well, you know, you know how it is with zoning, it's patchwork quilt and it's just mine.
Well, that's the problem, people amend the ordinance and never read...
Right, right.
So the question is, I think they meant to say that if you wanna vary the parking, it's special exception criteria, and that's what I've been proceeding under.
Right.
But the ordinance is really not very helpful.
I do.
Consider that.
Right.
I'm gonna, uh, take up the request, the applicant's request for a special exception on the parking. Should we have any discussion on it before we vote?
Do you, if you'd like to, you're certain...
Would you like to have any discussion on it?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say if there's a way to have the porous paving used, that would be definitely preferable, and pass that on to the planning board, I'm sure they'll ask for that also.
Yeah, that's what the, the applicant's advocating, so I will advocate for it too.
I think with the soils that are there, it would, it would be, and those soils can be highly erodible.
Mm-hmm.
And if you can stop sheet runoff, that would be...
If you want to tie the exception being granted potentially to using that material, we have no problem with that. That's how committed we are to doing that.
You can make that as a condition of approval.
We accept that, and we actually request that that would be a condition of approval.
Make it easy. It's novel, isn't it?
So we...
The criteria for the special exception regarding the, um...
Reduction in parking?
The reduction in the parking spaces. The proposed use shall be only those allowed in this ordinance by special exception. Is that true or false?
True.
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 True. The specific site is an appropriate location and of adequate size for the use.
True.
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 True. The use as developed will not adversely affect the character of the area in which the proposed use will be located.
True.
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 True. There will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians.
True.
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 True. Use will not place excessive or undue burden on town services and facilities.
True.
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 True. There would be no significant effect resulting from such use upon the public health, safety, and general welfare of the neighborhood in which the use would be located.
True.
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 True. It's unanimous.
Okay, and then if you wanna impose, um...
Okay.
Relevant conditions, the pervious surface?
We have, um, we're going to consider imposing an...
Irrelevant condition?
A condition, which is irrelevant condition.
The applicant has asked us to impose the condition.
To the effect that pervious asphalt must be used in the paving of the driveway and parking areas.
And could you just reiterate the number of spaces that the special exception is allowing?
Special exception is allowing twenty spaces. We have anything else?
It's eighteen spaces.
I think the plan should have eighteen.
I thought it was eighteen, too.
Eighteen plus six, I'm sorry.
It's eighteen.
It's eighteen plus six is...
Oh, you're just speaking, I'm sorry, you're speaking to...
Eighteen.
Required by eighteen spaces, but the overflow is the overflow.
But you've got overflow, so in essence, okay.
They're not gonna pave that, correct?
Right.
So you're gonna have eighteen paved spaces.
Okay, so in essence, but you have twenty-four available.
And, and plus...
That's, so that covers you essentially, okay, right.
Overflow, which is not paved.
Right, overflow, no, I'm sorry, I stand corrected.
So you're gonna actually have twenty-four altogether?
So you didn't really need...
Right, you don't...
I'm really confused now.
Covering the bases.
Hey, these won't be defined spaces, nice areas. So do you care about the whole thing, want to show up or not?
Well, what are we giving them?
Okay, I, I think you need to re-quantify what the special exception, exception is and its reduction in paved parking spaces to eighteen from the required twenty-four.
Thank you, that'd be very helpful.
So our special exception states that there will be eighteen paved spaces, there will be pervious asphalt in all the paving, and there will be six overflow paved spaces which will not be paved.
An unpaved area, right, overflow park.
Got that?
Got it.
Okay.
Okay.
And, I guess, any other, any...
We voted it in, so it's, it's official with, um...
You have your special exception and your variance.
In that case, if you'd like to withdraw the other applications, withdraw those?
Yes, uh, the, the applicant is withdrawing the other two applications with their subsequent special exceptions, so...
We're done here.
The public hearing agenda, you're not done, the public hearing agenda is over.
We thank you very much for your time and attention, and for a first board meeting was, went very well. Thank you very much, thanks a lot.
And we'll be seeing you at the planning board at some point, so, we'll be, okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can you flip this?
That's mine. So we just have some business...
You're gonna give me a note?
Hi.
I remember when we picked Ashland.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Great job.
I'm gonna be in your office.
Good for you, you know.
Yep.
You can live there.
Yeah, I tell ya, I walked in cold.
I'm pretty close to sixty-two. I know, I said that fifty-five, I'm, I'm inching toward that fifty-five mark. What's old?
Seventy-five.
Close to getting to sixty-two.
Don't give up on us yet.
No, really.
It's all relative.
I just have, I have some, some housekeeping for us, which is, and, and you guys did great. Um, this was a little complicated, as we know, Jack and I have been talking about it for a while now. But first of all, I need to know, and I've lost my paperwork, 'cause I have to punch it, um, who does not have the new two thousand ten eleven land use books? I have some for everybody, I just can't read them.
I don't have it.
All right, let me make a list of who doesn't have it. I have a spare tonight, so anybody can...
Mine is brown, the one I have.
Well, okay, ladies first, there you go, Robin, all right. So Neil...
You just gave me one today.
You've got one, Neil White needs one. Freeman, you've got yours, Patrice, you've got yours.
I can get you one.
So just Neil, so if you pop down on the way out, you can get that.
Okay.
Um, the zoning ordinance has been retyped with, um, it, last year was kind of crazy with people coming and going and stuff. The changes that were adopted at the March tenth, two thousand ten, um, town meeting, there was nothing this year. There were just minor definitions, but it skewed, you know, all the paging, the pagination and stuff, so no one has a new copy of that except Patrice. Does it say two thousand ten on the cover?
Yep, it says September, uh, let's see, last amended, March tenth, two thousand ten.
Okay, so everybody else needs a new one like Patrice, so all need new zoning ordinances. Um, one of the charges that I spoke to Dick Lewis about, and, and a little bit tonight with you folks, is that, um, the zoning board needs its rules of procedure. There are guidelines, um, through the RSAs, obviously, and the Office of State Planning has, uh, the handbooks, which I think you were referring to?
Yeah.
Maybe, Freeman, um, so, it's fairly ponderous, but that's okay. Half of this is planning, half of this is zoning. Um, yeah, this is all zoning. Um, and this is two-sided. We, we can print them out if we have to, I would suggest...
Is it online sometimes?
It's online, yeah. Um, and I think it was some of the stuff that I handed out last fall, which I can do again, but OEP, the Office of, of Energy and Planning, has links to this that you can download, but what we were gonna have to do anyway is go through and, um, come up with our own rules of procedure, so that will be something we're gonna have to be working on. I know that, I know everybody's thrilled about that, but it doesn't have to be that complicated.
I've, I've been to some of the workshops that you send us to, and I hear some of the rules, and they're not some of the things that we do, so it's confusing sometimes.
Yeah, yeah, well, I've got some, I've got some templates of, of different towns that have it, and what we'll do is, um, you know, I'll mail this stuff out in advance, and you folks can look at it. As we saw tonight, we really, we really do need procedure.
Mm-hmm.
And especially as kind of a, a renewed board here with everybody moving around to different places, um, so I'll be handing out quite a few things for ya, um...
Do you want to have a special, you want to have a meeting just to go over procedures?
I think we need to have a special workshop meeting, it's really difficult to, I know the planning board does do their work, and I think this is, you know, this is important enough, I think we can do it and get it out of the way.
That's a really good suggestion.
Um, so I don't know...
You don't have to notice it, right?
Yes.
Well, you do, but it doesn't, it's, it's just...
We don't have to have a public session for it, though.
No, it's, it's informal.
It's a work session.
Yeah. We also have a ringer, as you know, in, in row number two, three, who, who may have something to help us with that.
That'd be nice.
You know, anytime three of you gather together, it has to be posted.
Yeah.
Right.
So it will be.
You don't need to take public testimony at any public meeting unless it's a public hearing. So, yes, the public can come and watch you guys do what you have to do.
Right, but we just post it...
They can offer no input unless the chair says, what do you think?
Right, we'll just post it out and around. So if you guys wanna think about a date, fairly soon, to get started, um, planning board meets on the twenty-first, planning board meets on the seventh. I mean, just informal, you know, I'll notice it and then, and I'll get you the materials you need.
Send it out right away. Anything else coming down the pike here soon?
More applications?
Any more applications?
No. No.
Can I ask what the status of the Taylor Home is?
Yeah, I was gonna, I was wondering about that.
'Cause that's been in limbo forever.
I think it still is.
As far as I know, the, the adjacent property, the press spent development of Fairgrounds is still active, even when nothing's happened, I think he's waiting for the dam to burst.
Now...
Taylor Home, I think, pulled out.
That's what I had heard.
Out of the Fairgrounds.
I know they parted ways with Dennis, because those were supposed to be...
Right.
They had one point, so then they decided to develop them as two separate ones. They have most of their approvals, like the places where the town is concerned, that they haven't pressed over nor have they done any substantial...
Well, that stuff's, that stuff's all expired then.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it should be expired by now.
I think Dennis kept his going just by asking for an extension, and I don't know, he's looking to turn it over.
This is just miscellaneous stuff, it's workshops and this and that, so if we wanna pass these out, I don't know, do you folks wanna try to think about a date?
I think it would be helpful, once you send it, send us the material.
Okay, I'll send you the materials first.
The things to look at, the, the, separate towns to look at, and then we'll decide what we like and what we don't like, and we'll sit down and talk about it.
Now, everybody's got computer access, so if I gave you the links, you could go online and, I mean, this is a wonderful document, but I mean, I'll print it if we need to, but...
I'm not printing that at home.
No.
Well, I mean, you know, and then we don't use it, 'cause a lot of it's just blah, blah.
Right, right.
I mean, we really need to craft our own, so...
Right.
I love to work on procedures, so, I don't worry.
I'm so glad.
I like to have things orderly.
Can we appoint, all right, you to be there, procedure chair.
I think that we need a subcommittee, this is just the planner's recommendation, and that Patrice would love to appear at.
Yeah, I'd be happy to be on it.
Yes.
Could you, could we do that?
Make a motion and...
Make a motion for Patrice to head the subcommittee on...
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that Patrice, um, heads a subcommittee on, um...
Should be a protocol.
Should be a protocol, right.
These conferences are very helpful.
Got a second?
Yeah. I can't go to this one, 'cause I'm in Kentucky.
Okay, we have a second from Freeman.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Great, yay. Okay, so I'll get that stuff out to you. Does anybody wanna work on the subcommittee with me?
Sure, I will.
I don't have my calendar with me.
Anybody else?
Good, Neil.
Probably.
That's good, all right, we can bring something, sift through.
I'm, I'm still actually working.
Yeah, okay.
From, if there are three of us on the subcommittee, do we have to make a public notice?
Yeah.
Yeah, three more.
So...
Actually, those are mostly the committees that come out of the board's selection, I don't know, there's more like an ad hoc thing.
Well, depends, this is ad hoc, it's, it's sunsetted, but it depends where you meet. I mean, all I have to do is post a piece of paper twenty-four hours in advance. There's no formal public notice in the paper, and that jazz, yeah. Yeah, so...
Put it on the board?
Yeah, so, you guys can certainly talk amongst yourselves, I mean, I, and I would hope the whole board, maybe that's the way you wanna get it, once I get the information out, if you guys wanna brainstorm a little bit, and then we'll all meet together.
Right, I think that's good.
Just trying to get ahead of...
Hopefully, we can do it before the next May meeting.
I don't know what's that saying?
Think we can do that?
Oh, no, it's not, no. It's middle of...
Can you tell for the...
That's too fast.
See if we have any older.
Well, we'll, we'll, we'll...
But we don't have a meeting scheduled anyway at this point.
Let's see, we don't have any, anything on the agenda yet.
Did I, no, did I?
So, they have until the nineteenth of April to submit their application.
And that would be May 3rd.
May 3rd meeting.
So should we just meet anyways, even though there's nothing?
I think, you know, I think that's a good idea.
Because I've already got it scheduled out.
Yeah, may. Just be on a regular meeting as a full body.
May 3rd.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Whatever the date is.
First Tuesday, next month?
Yes.
We'll have my.
And then, when the subcommittee wants to meet, or whatever, just let me know so I can, I can notice it.
But we can work on these things.
Okay.
Good job, Neil, done deal.
All right, I think.
I'm telling you, I walked in here cold.
Right.
I wasn't even sure I was gonna be here tonight.
Well, that's what we said, I said, what if Neil's not here?
But if you, this is chair, if you want to entertain a motion, we can adjourn.
Entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
At my age, you know, it's almost.
Unanimous.
What's the zone, what's the zone we're working on?
After reading Jack's handout, I'm declining, I've got cataracts.